Just want to share with the audience that this is not, we're not going to open up an agenda yet. You know, our first part of the meeting today is really recognizing, you know, our employees and our staff and our campuses. So with that, if the board can join us at the front, we've got several groups of campuses and departments that have done extremely well, recognized both by the state and nationally. So with that, if the board can join me at the front, please.
Good afternoon, board members, members of the audience. Tonight, we would like to recognize the United ISD Instruction Television Department for winning nine video awards. These awards were recently presented at the National School Public Relations Association Conference in Baltimore, Maryland. NSPRA's annual award program offers the opportunity to earn national recognition for communications achievements. The video contest is open to U.S. and Canadian public and private schools, school districts, and education service agencies. For two years in a row, the United ITV Department has a distinction of winning more NSPRA video awards than any other school district. The ISD's nine winning SPRA videos include the United ISD Bond Video, the UISD Growth Video, the UISD Gangnam Bond Music Video, the UISD Board Avengers starring the United Board members as superheroes, the UISD Student Newscast, Knowledge for College Academic Game Show, Passat Killam, uh, Passat Killam Style Music Video, U. Robert Romano Memorial Video, and the Migrant Astronaut Public Service Announcement. The ITV Department includes Pete Martinez, Photographer Editor, Luis Garza, Photographer Editor, Joe Moreno, Photographer Editor, Jose Luis Wicho Salinas Jr., Photographer Editor, Ana Prado, Secretary, Robert Nino, Communication Specialist, and Susan Carlson, Director. Congratulations ITV.
Good evening. It gives us great pleasure tonight to recognize our campuses that have earned distinction designations. These distinction designations are awarded in recognition of outstanding achievement in specific areas. Student results are compared within a group of 40 similar campuses, and these campuses are grouped based on campus type, campus size, economically disadvantaged, English language learners, and mobility rates. To earn this distinction, a campus must be in the top quartile of their comparison group. United High School has earned this distinction in the top 25 in closing the gap and in post-secondary readiness. We do ask that our campuses return to their seats so that we can celebrate all of our United ISD campuses together. Next, we have United South High School earning a distinction designation in post-secondary readiness. Our next campus to be recognized, United Middle School, earning a distinction in the top 25% student progress. Congratulations. Our next campus to be recognized is United South Middle School, earning a distinction in academic achievement or Level 3 in math. Congratulations. Our next campus to be recognized, George Washington Middle School, earning two distinctions, one for academic achievement, Level 3 in reading English Language Arts, and the second, academic achievement, Level 3 in science. Congratulations. Our next campus to celebrate, Clark Middle School, earning three distinctions. One in academic achievement, Level 3 reading English Language Arts, the second, academic achievement, Level 3 in math, and the third, top 25% in student progress. Congratulations. The next campus earning distinction designations, Los Obispos Middle School, earning two distinctions, the first in academic achievement, Level 3 in math, and the second, top 25% in student progress. Congratulations. Our next campus, Troutman Middle School, earning four distinction designations. The first one, Level 3 in reading English Language Arts, the second, academic achievement, Level 3 in math, the third, top 25% in student progress, the fourth, top 25% in closing the gap. Also important to note that in the school year 2012-2013, Troutman Middle School was awarded the Federal Reward School for High Performance and High Progress. Congratulations. Our next campus, Gonzalez Middle School, earning a distinction designation in academic achievement, Level 3 in social studies. Our next middle school, Lamar Bruni Vergara Middle School, earning four distinction designations. The first, academic achievement, Level 3 in science, academic achievement, Level 3 in social studies, top 25% in closing the gap, and post-secondary readiness. Congratulations, and those were our secondary campuses. Beginning with our elementary campuses, the first campus we have is Nye Elementary School, earning a distinction in post-secondary readiness. Congratulations. Our next campus, Newman Elementary, earning a distinction designation in academic achievement, Level 3 reading. Congratulations. One more, one more, one more picture. Thank you. The next campus on our stage, Troutman Elementary School, earning five distinction designations. The first one, academic achievement, Level 3 reading, academic achievement, Level 3 math, top 25% in student progress, top 25% in closing the gap, and in post-secondary readiness. Congratulations. Our next campus, Finley Elementary School, earning a distinction in post-secondary readiness. Congratulations. Our next campus on stage, Kaysen Elementary School, earning five distinction designations. The first one, academic achievement, Level 3 in math, academic achievement, Level 3 in science, top 25% in student progress, top 25% in closing the gap, and in post-secondary readiness. Congratulations. Our next campus on stage, Quaddis-Lincoln Elementary School, earning five distinctions. The first, academic achievement, Level 3 in math, academic achievement, Level 3 in science, top 25% in student progress, top 25% in closing the gap, and in post-secondary readiness. Congratulations. Our next campus to join us on stage, Brada Elementary School, earning a distinction designation in post-secondary Earning a distinction designation in post-secondary readiness. Congratulations. The next campus to join us onstage Kennedy Zapata Elementary School. Earning five distinctions. The first, academic achievement, level three, math. Academic achievement, level three, science. Top 25% in student progress. Top 25% in closing the gap. And in post-secondary readiness. Congratulations. The next campus to join us, Guayad Elementary School. Earning a distinction designation in post-secondary readiness. The next campus to join us, Hart Elementary School. Congratulations, Guayad. Hart Elementary earned a distinction designation for post-secondary readiness. Congratulations. The next campus joining us onstage Muller Elementary School. Earning a distinction designation in post-secondary readiness. One more, one more. Congratulations. Next, we have Centeno Elementary School. Earning two distinction designations. The first, in top 25% student progress. And the second, top 25% in closing the gap. Congratulations. The next campus to join us onstage, Fasken Elementary School. Earning four distinction designations. The first, academic achievement, level three in reading. Academic achievement, level three in science. Top 25% in closing the gap. And post-secondary readiness. Congratulations. Our next elementary school, Kilim Elementary. Earning a distinction designation in academic achievement for level three in reading. Congratulations. And finally, here with us tonight, Alexander High School. Earning a distinction designation in the top 25%, closing the gap. Congratulations to all of our schools. Thank you for remaining united as we celebrate our students' achievement.
Hey, good evening. The, uh, the time is 6:20 PM. Today's the 17th day of September 2014. I call this meeting of the United Independent School District Board of Trustees to order. Mr. Rodriguez, could you please assist with the roll call?
Jack Kelpin.
Present.
Pat Campos.
Present.
Ricardo Molina.
Present.
Javier Montemayor.
Present.
Juan Roberto Ramirez.
Present.
Ramiro Veliz III.
Present.
Ricardo Gregoriz, we have a question.
Thank you, sir. Could everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, Texas Pledge, in a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which has had the same one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, eternal. Honored and Texas flag, a pledge of allegiance to thee.
Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. As the record show, the quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of the meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Agenda item number three, board announcements. Does any board member wish to make an announcement this time?
I just want to congratulate all the school district. Because with the presentation that just got over, it's really a proof of what the district is going. The goal they had already put up there for overdoing it. And to really do the great performance. And the power and the will of the teachers to make those students be wiser and get to higher education.
I would like to echo Mr. Ramirez's comments. I do want to congratulate all the, um, individuals that received the recognition right now. Their hard work is, um, is, um, recognized right now and I would like to thank them publicly. Thank you.
The only thing I want to add is that this is the third week so far and everything looks, as I've heard, is good. Everybody seems to be happy and, uh, Ms. Rendon hasn't been, uh, going out of, out of her mind lately. So I congratulate, congratulate everybody for their, for being prepared, for, for working hard and, uh, everything's smooth so far. I also want to comment that, uh, through Chief Camarillo's, uh, leadership, we're, we're looking at, uh, instituting a, uh, what's it called, chief? It's a, it's, it's a neighborhood watch program. Thank you. We've, we've discussed it. Uh, it's district-wide where we're inviting the parents to join in on the, uh, with, with the police department in assisting in, uh, keeping an eye out for, for criminal acts and, and things that can hurt our, our students. Uh, we're starting it up. Uh, we should be getting going in, in meetings in the next several weeks. And, uh, again, it's, this is for all the parents. It's going to assist with our safety and security, uh, upgrades that we're doing across the district. So I invite the board members as well to, to, you know, speak with, with the chief to try to get, uh, try to get some input and, and go out there to the meetings and, and meet some of those parents. So, uh, with that being said, I'll move to agenda item number four, public comments. I have one. Dr. Goldinas. Good evening, doctor. We have three minutes, sir.
Right. Thank you very much. Um, love your neighbor as you love yourself. Our neighbors are the students and the parents of UISD. Our neighbors are the employees of UISD. Our neighbors are board members at all the volunteer hours they give and their families, our community. And the key to all of this is the brain. We have to have a healthy brain and as a physician, as he represents Judge Nutson and Dr. Hall, and Judge Hall and also Judge Paloma is with us. Judge Nutson, yeah? Nutson, okay. The bottom line, this organization is called We Are Brains. I'm representing the medical society. If I hadn't learned about the brain when I was in elementary, I mean, again, the brain would have developed better. I was a typical O'Redo quarterback, you know, doing the things that typically kids do. But if I had learned about my brain when I was in elementary, uh, things would have been even more better for everybody. All of us have to have a healthy brain. The successes that you see here, 3% students that have been successful with their brains, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of effort being made to, to destroy their brains. This organization is, we're called This organization, as we recall, We Are Our Brains, is going to include the Chamber of Commerce. It's going to include everybody that wants to participate. But as a school district, you know, I was with, I was with your ad, I was a school board member, and I recommended this already to the, to the committee in education. Thirty minutes a week to protect the brain. To teach each thirty minutes, and I gave you all a handout last month, but I wasn't here, I wasn't in that. The bottom line is that thirty minutes each week to respect, to protect and develop our students' brains. We need to turn, we need to start when they're, when they're beginning. When their brain hasn't been destroyed by what's out there trying to, trying to bake him as a market. The brain is very, the brain is a gift, very susceptible. But as, as a physician, I see it, I see all the destruction that takes place, and it begins when we're kids. And a lot of these kids don't have good, don't have, don't have a mentor, or they may have just come from a one-parent family. They have a lot of challenges, but we've got to keep it healthy. And this is what we want, this is what we're recommending that you all make an effort to do. And again, we, this is that we're going to be going to all the others, we're going next month to LISD, the month after that, as I was seeing. We've already gone to the city council, and the city council has already approved the Texas Department. Thank you very much for your time. Protect the brain, thirty minutes a week. We, we can make a difference. We can make a difference. We can help every student become what they can become with a healthy brain. Thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome, doctor.
And the last time I gave you this handout, I'm also giving you this handout that came out in Reader's Digest. Really amazing. It's the Brain Con Tres Cornos. I've never seen anything explained so well. And I'm also giving you a handout that came out two weeks ago in the New England Journal of Medicine, which shows also the bad destruction that Maricopa is doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, doctor.
Thank you, doctor.
All right. Agenda item number five, recognitions. We've already taken care of those. Move to agenda item number six, consent to agenda items?
Yes, sir. Uh, the business and instructional meeting met in September the ninth, 2014. I make a motion to approve item A through N.
Second.
Have a motion in the second. Any discussion?
Mr. Mont, Mr. Montemayor, if I may. There are several other requests that I'd like to, the board to consider during this, this item, if I may. Additional requests that came in. There's an additional request by our police department sponsored by Mr. Javier Montemayor, the amount of $2,750 for the purchase of awareness bracelets, lanyards, pens, pencils, and football stress balls. There's a request from Washington Middle School sponsored by Mr. Juan Roberto Ramirez for the installation of a new audio system at the campus, the amount of $9,691.55. Request from Washington Middle School sponsored by Mr. Juan Roberto Ramirez again. Again, for relocating audio equipment from the gym to the cafeteria in the amount of $1,980.85. There's a request, uh, from Clark Middle School sponsored by Ms. Pat Campos for a star test maker generator in the amount of $1,000. And there's a request from Salinas Elementary sponsored by Mr. Ricardo Rodriguez for $5,000 for, for student perfect attendance field trip to take place in December in the amount of $5,000. I'd like the board to consider that during this approval process.
With those additions, uh, I have a motion in the second. Does anybody have any discussion regarding the additions?
No, sir.
All those in favor? All those opposed, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Item, agenda item number seven, items for individual consideration. A, approval of board minutes of the month, for the month of August 2014.
Motion approved.
Second.
Have a motion in the second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. Agenda item seven B, approval of donations.
Yes, Mr. Montemayor, members of the board. It is recommended the board trustees accept the following donations, and they will be attached to the minutes. Uh, we have one donation under $1,000 for a grant owed this month of $350 that we graciously accept. I want to thank these people for helping our schools.
Have a motion to approve the donation.
To move.
In the second. All those in favor? Motion passes. Agenda item seven C, renewal extension of delinquent tax contract.
Mr. Montemayor, members of the board. The current, uh, contract was executed on September 1st, 2011 through August 31st, 2015 for a four-year term. Um, the amendment that you have in before you would extend the contract through August 31st, 2019. Subsequent to that extension, then the firm would continue on a year-to-year basis unless the district's board of trustees would terminate the, uh, contract any sooner. Other than the extension, that is all the modifications that is, uh, before you tonight.
I'll make a motion to table.
Second.
Motion in the second to table. Any discussion on that? All those in favor to table? That motion passes. Item is tabled. Agenda item, I lost my place here, guys. Eight, closed session. Board will adjourn into closed session pursuant to the following sections of the Texas Open Meetings Act. Section A, 551.071, consultation with board's attorney. B, 551.071, consultation with board's attorney. 551.072, discussion on purchase exchange, de-serv value of real property. And C, 551.071 and 551.075, discussion of personnel to hear complaints against personnel. D, 551.071, 551.076, deliberation regarding security devices and personnel. And 551.07, E, 551.074 and 551.076. Consideration, considering the deployment specific occasions for or implementation of security personnel or devices. Time is now 6:32, and the board will adjourn into closed session. All right. Agenda item nine, reconvene from closed session. The time is now 8:21 PM. Board will take appropriate action on items if necessary as discussed below in closed session. A, approval of evaluation, annual evaluation of superintendent of schools.
Recommendation is to approve the evaluation of the superintendents of schools.
Second.
Motion in the second, all those in favor? Motion carries.
Agenda item B is, the recommendation is to rescind the proposed termination of Janine White-Hawke's term contract that took place on June 17, and approve the resignation agreement regarding the same.
Second.
Motion in the second, all those in favor? Motion passes.
Recommendation on agenda item C is to authorize legal counsel administration to enter into the purchase and sale agreement for the purchase of lots 1, 2, 6, and 7, Block 12, McPherson Acres, Unit 4, the rate of Webb County, Texas, and Dorado Management Incorporated, as discussed and presented in closed session.
To move.
Second.
Motion in the second, all those in favor? Motion passes.
No recommendation is needed or action on agenda item D. Recommendation on E is to approve the interlocal agreement with the county of Webb, C Task Force Program.
To move. Second.
All those in favor? Item passes.
Before, Mr. Montemayor, before we adjourn, just to remind the board that tomorrow at 10 o'clock is the dedication of the East Bus Compound. Uh, obviously, the board is invited to be able to join us tomorrow. Just want to assure that with you.
Thank you, sir.
To move.
One more, Mr. Cruz?
To move. Cruz?
There's, there's, no more items.
Agenda item E?
Uh.
Action regards to interlocal agreement with the county of Webb.
That's already approved.
I'm sorry.
That's already approved.
I missed it.
Yes.
Day's 8:21.
He went by on a curve.
Sorry. Hey. Uh, motion for adjournment?
Okay.
Second, third.